My name is Ed Flynn. I’m the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I’d like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their phones and electronic devices. Thank you. I’d also like to ask if we all can be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you’ll be asked to leave, and if you feel to comply, you’ll be escorted out. Please also note that according to city council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the role to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bock, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louis Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that there is a quorum present. This week’s clergy is Reverend Kevin Peterson invited by City Councilor Michael Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, would you like to come to the podium and introduce our clergy for today?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the privilege and honor of introducing a friend, a longtime friend, we’ve known each other over 25 years, and that’s Reverend Kevin Peterson, the founder of the New Democracy Coalition and the Faneuil Hall Race and Reconciliation Project. He is a minister based at the Metropolitan Baptist Church in Dorchester, senior fellow at the Center for Collaborative Leadership at UMass Kewston, master’s degree of arts in urban ministry at the Gordon Cornwall Theological Seminary, honorary doctorate with main letters from Wayland Baptist Theological Seminary. As a journalist, he’s also published numerous articles and editorials about race, culture, and politics. Most of note, he recently received the Martin Luther King Jr. Award at the Elliott Church in Roxbury. Someone that I know and appreciate and respect. We don’t always bat a thousand. We don’t always agree. We agree more than we disagree. But the spirit of that and also the friendship that has come from that, he knows that despite some of our disagreements, if he needs anything, I’m probably one of the first guy over the boards and saying, “If I need something, he’s one of the first that I call.” So I call him a true friend, cares deeply about our city, moving our city forward and having Boston be the best city apostle it can be. Without further ado, my guest today, Reverend Kevin Peterson, to deliver today’s invocation.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty, and thank you, President Flynn, for this hosting. Much appreciate it. I ask, in my tradition, I ask that all stand as we breathe a word of prayer. Good morning. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast brought us thus far along the way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us in the light, keep us forever in the path we pray. Lest our feet stray from the place our God where we met Thee, lest our heart drunk with the wine of the world, we forget Thee. Shadowed beneath Thy hand, may we forever stand, true to our God and true to our native land. Good Lord, on this day in this house of civic vitality where your servants meet weekly, we recognize your goodness, we thank you for your mercy and your love and your grace. You have truly blessed us. You have blessed us one by one and name by name. And these here, your public servants, have been blessed with the gifts and opportunities of leadership. They are fighting, Lord, every day against the odds, fighting on behalf of those who Jesus called the least of these. They are striving on the behalf of those whose backs are against the wall in life, struggling in pain. And so, Lord, we thank you because you have blessed our families, our loved ones, our kin and our kin, you have blessed our communities. You have blessed Boston and have embraced our righteous endeavors, and so, Lord, we say thank you. Still, some of us are confused and distraught this afternoon, despair, disalignment, disorientation dot the canvas of our spiritual skies, but joy comes in the morning. Some of us today face fear. Our fraughtness, our fragility, our feebleness, our finitude shape the features of our days, and we ask, what is this thing called life? What problems? What multiple vexations? People, our days, but joy comes in the morning. And in the storms of life, in the wintered bounds, shape-shifting, tempestuous throes of our daily existence, we wonder, where do we turn to? Where do we go? But joy comes in the morning. And so, we call out for help against the wild winds of street violence right now. Give us your wisdom today, oh Lord. We call out for help against paralyzing poverty and the punishing details replete with thriving in our city. Give us your knowledge and empathy today, oh Lord. We call out for help against the reign of racism and the ugly forms of xenophobia, of hate, of distrust. Give us your awareness today, oh Lord. And make us turn toward each other and not against each other, knowing that love is the question and love is the answer, and that we must ever choose the power of love over the love of power. We must ever choose the power of love over the love of power. Give us your love today, Lord. We call on you for help. We call on you to help us across the broad streets, the byways, the boulevards that characterize the neighborhoods and communities across the city, from Mass and Cass to Manipan Square, from Easty to Westy, from the North End to the South End, from the Seaport Center to Center Street. Be with us in every way. Protect us, Lord. Protect us with your love. And now, oh great God, this afternoon, we ask for your strength and your wisdom, for the leaders gathered here today with their heads bowed, they seek a word from you. Oh Lord, is there a word from you? Yes, there is a word. That word is justice. Keep these men and women of the Boston City Council humble and hard-working. Keep these women and men dedicated not to themselves but to the most desperate and the most vulnerable in our city. Keep these women and men open to the hope that their efforts can be translated into the exigencies of good policy. Keep these women and men ever aware that they are at their best, conductors of our best and collective intentions. And bless our mayor, and bless our Commissioner of Police, and bless our Superintendent of Schools. And as you do this, Lord, we will be grateful. And we will be grateful when the day in this city of Boston comes to a place where we’ll all be Boston-strong, we’ll all be flourishing in your goodwill and in your glory, and we will all stand on this shining city on the hill and say hallelujah, 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 amen. Thank you. So I would, if you don’t mind, like to say a few words, Counselor Flaherty and President Flynn and members of the council about where I believe we stand, even as we come to the final session of the year. You know, it doesn’t have to be said, but it should be said, that you, members of the Boston City Council, you may be seated, you, members of the Boston City Council, represent the good and the proud, the good and the proud beating heart of this city. And this is excellent. And beloved councils, you represent the pulse and the veins and the muscles and the sinew and the very consciousness of our local body politics, and this, and this is good and it’s excellent. And you mirror now the diversity and the complexity and the majesty of the city that is not like any other city, and this is good and this is excellent. Indeed, the nation looks to Boston as an example, for patterns of government, good example, for civic wisdom, for styles and ingenuity of political comportment, the nation looks to Boston for good example. You know this, I know this, we all know how great Boston is and how great this city council is, even in its present composure. But it has not been lost upon some of us in the public that despite the grandeur and the glorious pass of this body, despite the intelligence clearly represented here by your presence, councilors, and despite your best intentions and your deep caring, we, as a city and through proxy through the city council, find ourselves at an impasse at yet being even better. Now, no one is perfect. We all sin and we all fall short of the glory of God, no one, nobody is perfect. But the great question of life always is, might we be better? It’s not that we might be better men or be better women, not better husbands or wives, not just as better neighbors or good neighbors, but specifically today, I’m talking about being better city councilors. The question is, might we be better? Might we perhaps learn to refrain from our baser inclinations to manipulate and prevaricate and spin the truth and pose for the purposes of electoral advantage? Might we perhaps be wiser in taming what might be called the naughtier proclivities that focus on pure calculation and precinct advantage and votes? Might we be better? Now, no one is perfect. We’ve all sinned and fallen short of the glory of God, but again, in all sobriety and with all the love I can muster in my heart, I ask, might we be better? And we preachers struggle with this every day and every hour. We preachers try to be better, and we struggle with it every hour of every day, we leaders who just try to be a little better. And as I come to the closing of my remarks, I just want to encourage you. Based on what we in the public have seen this year, we ask you out of a deep love in our heart to be better. Be a little kinder to each other. Be a little more careful to each other. Be a little more conscientious about each other. And if we do that, we’ll find ourselves making the type of city, the beloved city that Dr. King has referenced so much during his life. I’m so proud to be part of this city. I’m so proud to be connected to this body through friendships and deep affiliations, but I ask that we just be better. Now, in my few seconds, I just want to say that the issue of reparations will be raised today, and I’m deeply concerned about this issue because my organization has been connected to this matter from the outset, and we’ve tried to connect reparations to Faneuil Hall, and it’s all in the efforts of trying to be better. So I ask you to, just give me, I just conclude, so I ask you, so I just ask you, as I conclude, to be supportive of this bill as we try to be a better city. Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, can you please let the record be reflected that Counselor Arroyo is present, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louis Jean. I would also like to recognize in the audience former City Councilor Garrett Saunders for being here. Approval of the minutes. We’re onto the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honor of the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1520, please?
Docket number 1520, message in order for your approval, in ordinance establishing the Office of Participatory Budgeting, amending the City of Boston Code, Chapter 5, with the insertion of a new section, 5-1.11.
Thank you. Docket 1520 be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please let the record be reflected that Counselor Mejia was here? Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1521, please?
Docket number 1521, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in an amount not to exceed $4,785,000 for costs related to the pedestrian improvement projects on Canal Street and Thoreau Path and the bike lane connection projects between Causeway Street and Commercial Street.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Counselor Baker. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This grant is mitigation money that comes through the BPDA from development that happened over in the Garden and Canal Street, but the cost is, this is a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency for costs related to the pedestrian improvement projects on Canal Street and Thoreau Path, as well as bike lane connection projects between Causeway Street and Commercial Street. I’ve received emails from the West End residents supporting this funding and doing the abundant amount of construction that’s occurred over the years. The road path has been damaged, and funding will help make this a safer walking path for residents. This was part of another package that included Northern Ave. We separated them out. We vetted this, so I’d like to suspend and pass this here today, Mr. President.
Counselor Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passes docket 1521. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 1521 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1522?
Docket number 1522, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $567,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 23 state information system improvements awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund specialized equipment for 564 marked and unmarked cruisers to implement the motor vehicle automated citation and crash system in Boston. The e-citation technology issues electronic traffic citations which can be printed out in the police cruisers.
Thank you. The docket 1522 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1523?
Docket number 1523, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $90,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 22 composting and food waste reduction pilot projects awarded by the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation, to be administered by the Public Works Department. The grant will fund the planning process for a permitted site in the City of Boston with the capacity to accept food scraps and soil paper.
Before I assign it, I know Counselor Bock, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. President. I was hoping to seek suspension and passage. I thought since it was Public Works, it would be under, but I can speak to it. I just would say, this is an exciting grant from the federal government. I think folks know that we’ve got a composting pilot right now going for 10,000 families in the City of Boston with the goal being to grow that to 20 and then 30 and beyond. The trick is that we are actually, even just with our 10,000, basically taking up the compost processing capacity of the region right now, and so for Boston to really expand this program to be a universal thing, we need to create more of that capacity to process food waste. It’s also an important piece of the puzzle with getting food waste into a separate stream and helping with our rat problem that we’ve all been discussing. So as the council knows, we put some money in the American Rescue Plan budget for creating permanent composting and digester facilities in the City of Boston, but we’re really excited that to supplement that, this grant has come in from the federal government, not least because we think that starting to partner with the USDA around the issue could help us get further federal support in the future, since really building out this full capacity for the city could be quite a sizable undertaking. So it would be fantastic if so, that Public Works could start working with that money. We could suspend and pass it before the end of the legislative year.
Thank you, Counselor Bock. Counselor Bock, the Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1523. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 1523 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1524?
Docket number 1524, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 national violence death reporting system awarded by the Mass Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigation Services and the Drug Control Unit.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty, the Chair of Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This grant is mitigation money that comes through the BPDA from development that happened over in the Garden and Canal Street, but the cost is, this is a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency for costs related to the pedestrian improvement projects on Canal Street and Thoreau Path, as well as bike lane connection projects between Causeway Street and Commercial Street. I’ve received emails from the West End residents supporting this funding and doing the abundant, to the abundant amount of construction that’s occurred over the years. The road path has been damaged, and funding will help make this a safer walking path for residents. This was part of another package that included Northern Ave. We separated them out. We vetted this, so I’d like to suspend and pass this here today, Mr. President.
Counselor Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passes docket 1521. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 1521 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1522?
Docket number 1522, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 national violence death reporting system awarded by the Mass Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigation Services and the Drug Control Unit.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty, the Chair of Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for suspension and passage today, $10,000 in, to help foster the spirit of cooperation between the Public Health Commission and the Boston Police Department, particularly as it pertains to what we’ve been dealing with over the Mass and Cass area. This grant would fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigative Services and the Drug Control Unit, and at this time, this chair move for suspension and passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passes docket 1524. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 1524 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1525, please?
Docket number 1525, message in order for the withdrawal of docket number 0927, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in the amount not to exceed $6,785,000 for the costs related to the pedestrian improvement projects on Canal Street and Thoreau Path and the bike lane connection projects between Causeway Street and Commercial Street and the planning, design, and/or reconstruction of the Northern Avenue Bridge.
Thank you. Docket 1927 is withdrawn, but docket 1525 will be placed on file. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1526 to 1528 together.
Docket number 1526, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of November 2, 2022. Docket number 1527, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of November 30, 2022. And docket number 1528, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of November 30, 2022. And docket number 1528, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 7, 2022.
Thank you. Those dockets 1526 through 1528 will be placed on file. Reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0239?
Docket number 0239, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 2, 2022. Docket number 0239, in ordinance creating a commission to study and develop reparation proposals for African-Americans, submits a report recommending that the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo, the Chair on the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on March 28, 2022, and a working session on November 3, 2022, and I’d like to thank Counselor Julia Mejia, Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, and Counselor Brian Worrell for sponsoring this matter, as well as my council colleagues for attending, Counselor President Flynn, Counselor Ruth Louis Jean, Counselor Kenzie Bock, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Kendra Lara, and Counselor Erin Murphy. And I’d also like to thank members of this administration, Mary Angeli Solis Cervera, Chief of Equity and Inclusion, Lori Nelson, Senior Advisor for racial justice in the Cabinet for Equity and Inclusion. And the committee was also joined by advocates, Dr. Jim Adari Kamara, Director of the Center of African Caribbean and Community Development, Yvette Modestine, Commissioner of the National African-American Reparation Commission, and Dr. Raymond Windbusch, Director of the Institute for Urban Research at Morgan State University. And I’d like to thank them for their attendance and participation at these hearings as well. This docket is an amended draft. This docket is an amended draft from the original, and I want to get into some of those changes. One of those changes was to put in clearly delineated phases. This task force now has three clearly delineated phases of work it will do. Phase 1 being research and document the City of Boston's role in antihistorical ties to the African slave trade and the institution and legacies of slavery. Phase 2 will make final, sorry, phase 2 will actually assess the City of Boston's actions to date to address continued impacts of enslavement. And phase 3 will make final recommendations to the City of Boston for truth, reconciliation, and reparations, addressing the City of Boston's involvement with the African slave trade. And to answer some of the things that have come up, one of the requests that we had received both in hearings and through outreach is a hope in a request that we make it clear and delineated within the language that the large majority of this board would be African-American Black slave freedmen in this group. And because of the language regarding the creation of task forces and commissions that we have on the legality of sort of race neutrality, what we did to try and address that is made clear within the membership that the language we use here is that the mayor shall appoint no fewer than five members who have a connection to the descendants of formerly enslaved Black people in the United States. And the hope is that that language makes clear that the intent for the makers, and I think the intent for getting to a place that we want to be, and I want to be clear about this too, this is not conclusionary. I fully support reparations. When those recommendations come forward, I will fully support and push what those recommendations are. But the goal for this task force is to define, not limit, the amount or severity of the harm that we are able to find documented within both the time of chattel slavery, but also in the aftermath of that chattel slavery and policies directly created and run by this city that have impacted people of color, specifically African-American Black people, on the basis of the aftereffects and afterimpacts of a racial caste system that was created in this country. And so the objective of this task force is to both analyze and measure the severity of that harm, and then to analyze and measure what the severity of the cure for that harm should be. And it is to do that work as an independent body, which is written out in this document, on a firmly prescribed timeline that does give the task force itself the ability to extend with a letter to the mayor if they feel that they are not going to reach one of these deadlines. All of this is clearly delineated to take no longer than two years maximum to get to where we want to get to on actual proposals to the city for reparations or reparations for the harm that this city is responsible for. And in no way should this limit, in my opinion, actions by this council itself to continue to advocate for the alleviation of those harms and other measures and in other ordinances and hearings. I think that as they do their work, we should continue to do ours. And I want to just note that passage of this docket is a culmination of the work sacrificed and vision of those who began that work, and namely, I want to name Senator Bill Owens, who began the conversation around implementing reparations in Massachusetts in 1988, some 34 years ago. And so we know the ability to enact this legislation at the municipal level has a direct impact on racial equity and reconciliation of Black Bostonians. And today, Boston has the opportunity to join a growing group of cities across the nation in establishing a task force on reparations to forge the pathways towards justice and healing. There's a need for the City of Boston to reconcile its history with slavery and its consequences resulting in systemic racism and discrimination. And I believe that this is a strong first step getting there and ensuring that we have a productive, fully task, fully functioning task force that has the ability to independently do this work while still having the resources of this city to get that work done. And so I look forward to recommending that this pass. I look forward to seeing this task force take shape, and I look forward to seeing the results of this work reverberate through the city and its impact, similar to, in my hope, is the reverberations of the harm and the generational reverberations of that harm, that the cure and that the work that we are doing reverberates similarly for generations to come. And so I'm excited to put this on the floor. This was a process that took a lot of back and forth with the administration, with community, with the sponsors. And I think we've gotten to a place where the product will be strong, and it is my hope that folks give this process a chance that as we move towards appointing and doing that, which are powers that lie with the mayor, because this is something that comes from the council through charter, the mayor has the ability to make these appointments. But it's clearly the wish of myself and the sponsors that those who are put on this have a direct connection to the descendants of slavery in the United States and that they lead that conversation as they should. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I recommend that this docket ought to pass in a new draft. And I thank the sponsors again for their work over the last two years. And I thank those who have come before us, like Senator Bill Owens, who have stood up and had these conversations when it was a much more difficult climate, frankly, to have them in. And so I'm grateful to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. I'm going to give an opportunity for the sponsors to provide comments for three minutes if they would like. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise proudly as a co-sponsor in favor of the creation of the reparations task force in the City of Boston. Earlier in the year, the council agreed to apologize for the role that the city played in the transatlantic slave trade. This was a powerful moment, and I am proud that the council voted the way that we did. But as powerful as that was, it exists in the realm of the words. As profound as it is, it doesn't cost anyone a penny. Jargon is well and good, as we all know. It has meaning, but it doesn't put food on anyone's table or pay anyone's rent or put roof on anyone's head, over anyone's head. So here we are. This is the next step. The reparations task force can begin the process of taking us from words to action. No one entity, including the mayor, should exercise a dominant influence over it in terms of appointments, sure, but specifically, it should belong to the people. The task force needs to represent various elements, including community organizations and civic leaders that represent the masses of Bostonians, and of course, all based in best practices. You know that we are a rich city and one of the richest in the country. We have hospitals, universities, and museums that are worth millions and millions of dollars and that have grown rich from the labor of Black people, both paid and unpaid. They need to be part of this process. And truly reparative process will call from the resources that these institutions have. And if you are wondering if such task force is needed, I ask you to think of the chattel slavery that existed in this city. I ask you to remember decades of legalized segregation. I remind you of the redlining that limited where Black people in our city could live. I humbly ask that you recall the education that Black children have received in Boston has been described as death to an early age. I ask that you think of the fact that while we have some of the greatest hospitals in the world, the healthcare experiences of the masses of Black people have been described as medical part-time. I submit that predominantly Black Roxbury has the highest percentage of people making less than $15,000 per year and the lowest percentage of people making more than $150,000 per year in the city. I am called upon to mention that the average life expectancy predominantly Black and working class Roxbury is 30 years less than the wealthier and the whiter Back Bay merely a mile away. And yes, it's an oft quoted stat, but it reminds true that the average Black family in Boston has a net worth of just eight bucks. Some will argue the statistic. Quite sure it's not far behind, compared to nearly a quarter million for an average white family. So yes, we need reparations for Black people in Boston, for people directly connected to these harms. And before we can get the reparations, we need a reparations task force is necessary. Therefore, I humbly but forcibly request a you vote in favor of the reparations task force in our city. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
That's right. Give it up for her. Yes. So just wanted to just really quickly just rise in gratitude and to thank Senator Owens for having the insight and political courage to lead us in this space where we are today. And to Dr. Kamara for leaning in and working alongside our office, and Yvette Modestine and Tanisha Sullivan from the NAACP who first introduced this concept to our office and invited us to participate with such audacity. And so for your leadership and helping us get to this place, thank you. I also want to thank King Boston, NDC, and the countless other community advocates and organizers who have been sounding the alarm for repair and harm here in the City of Boston. I want to thank my co-sponsors for standing up and fighting alongside us to get to this place. Thank you. And to the administration, y'all know I'm not easy to deal with. But when I like to fight, I dig my heels in because I know when you fight the good fight, we all win. So I just want to thank the administration for going back and forth with us so that we can land in a place that was going to affirm the people that we are fighting for. So thank you to Mayor Wu for having the political courage to step into that power and create space for that to happen. And lastly, I want to thank my colleagues for embarking on this journey with us, and to Counselor Bach in particular, who, when we first introduced this hearing order, when it wasn't the advantageous thing to do, did so and stood alongside us. So thank you, Counselor Bach, for joining us on this journey as well. And Counsel Luigi Gen, who held it down during the working sessions and really helped us understand and define language that was going to pass legal muster in the early stages. So I just want to say thank you for standing alongside us. And thank you. It's just really all about thank you because what this moment needs is for us to recognize not just the harm, but the opportunity that we have to heal. And the only way we're going to heal is if we are seen, validated, and heard, and acknowledging it. So I hope as this task force is created that we do so with the best intentions enrooted in what this moment calls for, is for us to have the political courage and will to finally right the wrong. So thank you to all of those who joined us, and I hope that my colleagues will recognize that this is just the beginning of the conversation, not the conclusion. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to my co-sponsors, Counsel Mahia. Thank you for giving all those thank yous that really heartfelt. And thank you to Counsel Anderson, my other co-sponsor. Also like to thank all the advocates that we see here who are continuously fighting for equity and corrective action here in the City of Boston. Dr. Kamara, Mr. Winbush, Ms. Modestine, Reverend Kevin Peterson, King Boston, NDC, NAACP, Embrace Boston. Thank you for all your work in advancing equity. Also, I acknowledge, as we've heard, the shoulders that we all stand on, and pay homage to our Senator Owens, aka the Godfather. I stand in support of this monumental and long overdue ordinance that will start the process of dismantling systemic oppression and putting in place old investments to forever change the trajectory of Black people here in Boston. For hundreds of years, in a variety of different forms, systemic oppression has taken shape in every area of public policy: slavery, Jim Crow laws, busing, urban renewal, redlining, and blockbusting. It's reflected. We've seen this play out in the budget, from every report in every department here in the City of Boston. And this is not news to anyone here in this room or on this council. And generations have sacrificed and fought for a future free of systemic oppression. And it's past time that our government acts to mitigate past harms and prevent future policies rooted in these inequities. Reparation, in my mind, it just is not a one-time payment. It's not just about our capital budget allocations or funding the programs, but it's a more holistic approach to right past wrongs and ensure a brighter future for generations of Black Bostonians. It's institutional change that is rooted in data, corrective action, intentionality, and urgency. We often hear about Boston's role in making of U.S. history, and as a Black man and a lifelong Bostonian who has seen these disparities play out every day, it is my dream to help our city fulfill the promises of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all, and to fulfill this promise of our city and country to every resident. So I'm hoping that everyone on this council votes in favor of this initiative and signal to the rest of the country that Boston will continue to fight for racial equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Luigi Gen. Counsel Luigi Gen, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I don't want to take up much time. I just want to say thank you to the sponsors. And I also want to echo the thanks to Senator Bill Owens, who really spearheaded this conversation here decades ago, and to acknowledge the many people who have been working towards reparations, just both here in the city and across the country. As a city councillor, I'm proud of our city for coming to this point. As Counsel Mahia noted, I had the privilege of working with you, Yvette Modestine, with Dr. Kamara, with Dr. Winbush, and really thinking about what repair looks like. As a Black woman, as someone who comes from Haiti, the first country to really throw off the yoke of slavery and the only country to be founded off of a stave slave revolt that really inspired many, we know that the continued harm that chattel slavery has had on so many of our communities. And here, I'm excited for us to really center the voices of those who have been directly impacted as a result of chattel slavery here in the City of Boston. This is an opportunity for us to examine the harm caused and to repair through dialogue, truth, reconciliation, compassion, and most importantly, material repair. And so I'm excited for this moment for our city and for what this can mean. This is really historic and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to really begin to examine what that repair really could look like. And so my colleagues have already stated with significant depth the work of this task force and what they will do. And I continue to be hopeful about what we can achieve and look forward to working alongside you, the New Democracy Coalition, and all of those who have really led the fight here. So I just want to say I'm hoping that this will pass. And my congratulations to all of you for the work involved here. This is just the beginning, and I look forward to continuing working alongside all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. And at the risk of sounding repetitive, I just want to echo all of the sentiments that my colleagues share here on the floor. This is an incredibly pastime for us to be doing this work, but nonetheless, we welcome it at whatever speed it is happening. I think that there was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that were put into making this happen, not just for the City of Boston, but for all of the countless cities across the country who have also taken on this work. And so again, although we are not leaders, I'm really excited to say that the City of Boston is going to take this on. I have every intention of voting to support it, and I hope that my counsel colleagues would do the same. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just, I do want to thank all of the folks who have worked for so many years, so many decades on this front, and give a particular shout out to Counsel Mahia, just because when we did introduce that hearing order together, it was for a conversation. And I think it's so important, this absolutely has to be a conversation, but it needs to be a process that yields real things, and we need to have the folks who are the descendants of slaves at the heart of it. And that meant coming up with a process that would get it off the council floor and like into that really robust, well-supported community conversation. And so I'm really glad that this went from being just a hearing order to this filing today, and we'll be pleased to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be voting in favor of the
I will be voting in favor of the task force here today, with just a couple stats. In 1783, and this comes from an op-ed in the Bay State Banner, 1783, the state of Massachusetts made slavery illegal. The city of Boston was not incorporated until 1822, and the 1790 census had no slaves living in Massachusetts. So just a couple points, I will be voting in favor of the task force, though, if it provides healing for communities, and that's what I'm about. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Arroyo seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docet 0239 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docet number 0239. Council Arroyo.
Yes.
Council Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Bach.
Aye.
Council Bach, aye. Council Braden.
Aye.
Council Braden, aye. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn, yes. Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rurrell.
Yes.
Council Rurrell, yes. Docet number 0239 has received a unanimous vote.
Can you please read Docet 1516 to 1519 together, please?
Docet number 1516, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on December 7, 2022. Docet number 1516, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $2,72,216 to provide funding for various departments for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888 citywide. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docet number 1517, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on December 7, 2022. Docet number 1517, message in order for the supplemental appropriation order for various departments for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $2,72,216 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888 citywide. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docet number 1518, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on December 7, 2022. Docet number 1518, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $360,360 to provide funding for various departments for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888. Mayor's Office of Housing submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. In Docet number 1519, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on December 7, 2022. Docet number 1519, message in order for supplemental appropriation for various departments for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $360,360 to cover for the fiscal year 23 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888. Mayor's Office of Housing submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Bach, the Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Council Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this matter was actually referred to committee last Wednesday, and I want to give a special thanks to the clerk's staff and the central staff who managed to get a notice out for us minutes after it was accepted to the committee on the floor so that we could have a hearing on it on Friday. And that was important because this represents the settling of contracts for almost 5% of the city's workforce. I think it's 870 employees across the two contracts, SEIU 888 citywide, across 20-odd departments, and then the Mayor's Office of Housing Division specifically, which bargains separately. It is a sort of continuation of the pattern contract that we've seen. So the pattern is it's a 2%, 1.5%, 2% increases over three years. These, as councillors will remember, are contracts that actually go back to 2020. So most of these contracts will actually start to lapse again in 2023. And one of the things that the councillors who joined me at the hearing, President Flynn and Council Murphy and I, all stressed was the hope that, especially in this context of rampant inflation and a really hard cost of living for our city workers, that as the city looks to kind of the next round of contracts, well, there are reasons for us to sort of complete the pattern, to be fair, across all city workers, that now as we get to the next round of contracts, that we're able to do more substantial increases paired with more substantive reforms, because I think we all see that those numbers in light of the current inflation are a bit low. These folks will also get the one-time lump sum $1,000 that has been going to a lot of the civilian union workers in recognition of their work during COVID-19. There's an adjustment to the way that the city supports, the amount the city supports, MBTA passes, and the Free Blue Bikes membership, all in the employees' favor. Juneteenth is formally added to the contract. There was just some language fixes around including veteran status, gender, gender identity, gender expression, and ethnicity in the non-discrimination article of the contract, a couple of wellness days in the next couple of years that are additional for folks, and then this recognition that SEIU MOH is a separate unit for collective bargaining. So continuation of the pattern, and obviously, as folks know, this council vote is required in order for people to get their retroactive pay going back to 2020. So the reason that we rushed it through was that, you know, we would really like finance to be able to be getting people those checks and having it come as a nice thing for the holidays. So in recognition of that, Mr. President, I would ask that all four of these dockets be approved today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bach. Council Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docet 1516. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 1516 has passed. Council Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docet 1517. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 1517 has passed. Council Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docet 1518. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 1518 has passed. Council Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docet 1519. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docet 1519 has passed. Before we move on to the matters recently heard for possible action, I wanted to acknowledge the city of Boston municipal security offices, the incredible role they play. It's the most diverse city union in Boston. They're also up for contract negotiation, and they're probably one of the lowest-paid unions as well. So it's important that we treat all of our city workers with respect, but these city workers also, again, the most diverse union in the city of Boston. Our security, municipal police staff, security staff deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docet 0323?
Docet number 0323, order for a hearing to discuss restoring municipal voting rights to immigrants with legal status.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean, the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigration Advancement. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Mr. President, on Monday, December 12, the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement held a hearing on Docet number 0323, order for a hearing to discuss restoring municipal voting rights to immigrants with legal status. Committee held a hearing with the sponsor Council Lada, and councillors Flynn, Murphy, Coletta, Mahia, Rurrell, Arroyo, Fernandez Anderson, were all in attendance, and a letter of absence from Council Bach. Thank you to the administration, specifically to the Director of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement, Monique Tounouen, Sabino Pomante, the Head Assistant Registrar of the Election Department, Elijah Miller, Director of Policy for the Department of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, and thank you to the panelists, Alex Kazar, the Matthew W. Sterling Junior Professor of History and Social Policy at the Harvard Kennedy School, Shanique Spalding, the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Voter Table, and Jacob Love, Staff Attorney for the Lawyers for Civil Rights. And thank you to the public testimony from Tripeta Simmons, who wrote in comments regarding returning citizens' voting rights. Information gathered at the hearing, the administration panel, specifically Moya Director Nuen, spoke about the work of Moya in promoting and recognizing the contributions of immigrants to our city, and how they would be integral in ensuring that our immigrants with legal status would know of their voting rights because of the deep partnerships Moya has with community organizations who have already been doing this work of organizing immigrant communities around voting rights. Elijah Miller, the Director of Policy for the Department of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, spoke passionately about strengthening the ability of immigrants to fully and equitably participate in economic, civic, social, and cultural life in Boston, and how this would be a step towards doing that. And Sabino Pomante, Head Assistant Registrar of Elections, spoke about what his office would need in terms of resources for implementation, and brought up matters the city council should consider when thinking about restoring noncitizen voting rights. The advocate panel, specifically Jacob Love, Staff Attorney for Lawyers for Civil Rights, discussed with the committee the legal barriers and challenges in implementing of voting rights for noncitizens, but also talked about how other states and cities have approached the issue of restoring municipal voting rights to immigrants with legal status. Professor Kazar from the Harvard Kennedy School informed the committee about the history of voting by noncitizens and its relative compliance among states in the 19th and early 20th century, including noncitizen voting in some federal elections up until 1996. So this is not a foreign idea by any means. The committee also heard testimony from Shanique Spalding of the Mass Voters Table on issues including the work that they do with community groups on advocacy around restoring municipal voting rights, and doing simulations with immigrant groups and members about what it would be like to vote in the process of actually voting. Overall, the committee discussed how legal voting rights for noncitizens would be a significant boon to our communities, who are already taxpaying members, who participate in our civic life. The committee discussed what the best processes for passing a noncitizen voting rights bill would be, and what the challenges would be for implementation. We on this body, every day, not every day, but very often, set legislative ordinance, and noncitizens have no ability to elect us in making those laws. That exclusion is a fundamental deprivation of immigrants with legal status from our process and their own right to self-determination. We on this body have the ability to correct for that, and we should. That is the work of equity. This hearing order will remain in committee for further action. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Docet 0323 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docets 1171 through 1173, 1176 through 1179, and 1212, please?
Docet number 1171, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Sheri Dong as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2023. Docet number 1172, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Hanzi Beda Barazza as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2024. Docet number 1173, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Giovanni Valencia as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2024. Docet number 1176, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Alan E. Langham as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2025. Docet number 1177, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Norm Stembridge as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2025. Docet number 1178, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Chevelle Oliverre as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2025. Docet number 1179, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of David Collins as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2025. And docet number 1212, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Katie Werwell as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning Development and Transportation. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These matters were sponsored by the mayor, referred to the Committees on Planning Development and Transportation, Docets 1171, 1172, 1173, and 1176, 1177, and 1179 on September 28, 2022, and Docet 1212 on October 5, 2022. The committee held a public hearing in the IONELA. Mr. President, I'm going to speak on all these, and we'll vote separately on them. I assume they should have said that from the beginning. Just going to speak on all of them broadly, and you can break them up.
Yeah, that's fine, Council Baker.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The committee held a public hearing in the IONELA Chamber on December 12, 2022, to take testimony and consider the same. I was joined by my colleagues, Council Murphy, President Flynn, Council Louie Jean, Council Coletta, Council Rurrell, and Council Bach. In attendance, Chris English, Chief of Staff at Inspection Service Department, attended the hearing and presented testimony on the mission, composition, and jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeal, and in support of all the appointments and reappointments. The ZBA totals 14 members, seven primary and seven alternate members with the range of experience required by state law, and they serve three-year terms. Alternates serve if primary members are unable to attend ZBA hearings, and the members are appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. The ZBA is tasked with reviewing development proposals in the city of Boston. They hear requests regarding zoning issues such as conditional use permits, variances, permission to expand or change approved uses, and similar zoning relief. The city council's Committee on Planning Development, Transportation reviewed the resumes and credentials of all the appointees, and the appointees responded to questions from the Chair and other councils regarding their qualifications, relevant experience, background area of expertise, how they would handle conflict of interest situations, and on the independence rationale and criteria that they would exercise when making decisions. Based on the testimony and information presented at the hearing, and having considered the same, I respectfully report that these appointments and reappointments are to be confirmed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee, acceptance of the committee report in confirmation of Sheri Dong as a member of Zoning Board of Appeals, which is Docet 1171. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report in confirmation of Docet 1172. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report in confirmation of Docet 1173. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report, confirmation of Docet 1176. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report in confirmation of Docet 1177. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report, confirmation of Docet 1178. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report in confirmation of Docet 1179. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Council Baker seeks acceptance of the committee report, confirmation of Docet 1212. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment has been confirmed. Mr. Clerk, can you read 1327, please?
Docet number 1327, order for a hearing assessing the need for a text amendment for the Boston zoning code relative to special protection zones.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Lara, the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. We held a hearing on the need for a text amendment to the Boston zoning code regarding specifically Article 91, that has been in draft form for several years now. In this hearing, we specifically explored the idea of transit-oriented displacement zone overlay in the city's code. I, let me see, excuse me, let me pull up my notes so I can thank the proper people. I was joined yesterday by- I was joined yesterday by my council colleagues and Councilor Gabriela Coletta, who was my co-sponsor, Councilor Braden, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Bach, Council Luizhen, and Council President Flynn, who attended and participated this hearing. I want to thank the advocates from Action for Equity, the Chinatown Community Land Trust, City Life Vida Urbana, and various other advocacy groups who came and shared for the need for anti-displacement zones, specifically around the Fairmont Corridor in East Boston, and an overlay that would protect row houses in Chinatown. Thank you to the members of the administration, who also explained to us the benefits of revisiting Article 91, but also some of the difficulties and challenges to using zoning versus an ordinance, and what we could use the zoning code for, and what we should consider making policy changes. Ultimately, we asked the administration if there, what the administration shared with us is that any aspect of the zoning code can be appealed versus using an ordinance. And so we had some technical conversation about where Article 91 would go. But Article 91 ultimately aims to create a special overlay district in transit corridors that would help and support us in slowing down displacement in these neighborhoods. What we see in the City of Boston is that whenever there is any kind of expansion of transit accessibility in a neighborhood, it significantly increases displacement. And so a transit-oriented overlay would ultimately set protections for that neighborhood, but also would create an influx of services and other economic supports that would help keep people in their neighborhoods and in their homes. Community advocates really stress the time sensitivity of creating special protection zones. And again, the main areas that we discussed were the Fairmont Corridor, which is seeing major changes due to the investments by the state in public transit there, and also the Chinatown row houses and in East Boston. And also, Councilor Braden shared about how Alston Brighton could benefit from this overlay. I want to give time, President Flynn, if you can, to Councilor Coletta to share a little bit on this. But I would like, ask that this docket stay in committee so that we can move towards legislative changes in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Laura. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. I want to thank the maker and my co-sponsor, Council Laura, for her work in this. It was an incredibly informative hearing, and I am going to use the words of Lydia Lowe, who said, "It's never too late to keep fighting." East Boston, I used the term yesterday, has been decimated by displacement due to gentrification. And so we really see this as an opportunity to plan for the inclusion of folks along transit corridors, and to help them grow their economic prosperity as we do that. And so I see, everybody that knows me knows that I love zoning. I'm a zoning nerd, I guess I'll say, on the floor. And I really see this as, again, an opportunity to protect folks from being displaced, and protecting East Boston, the Fairmont Corridor, Chinatown, as well as Alston Brighton. So I look forward to future conversations, maybe working this into our code through an ordinance, seeing that you can appeal, and as we heard through the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, you can appeal the zoning code. So I need to understand and make sure that if we do have these special protection zones, we're not going to have individual developers coming in and trying to appeal it at the ZBA. So again, I look forward to those future conversations, and I want to thank all the advocates and my colleagues for joining us in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. Docket 1327 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, will you read docket 1240, please?
Docket number 1240, order for a hearing on Green New Deal for Boston Public School Plans. It's specifically the plan to merge six schools into three and split each of them onto two campuses.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia, the Chair of the Committee on Education. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And earlier, I wanted to have one more comment in regards to the reparations task force to thank my colleague, Councilor Arroyo. We spent many nights and weekends going back and forth with the administration, and your hard work is deeply appreciated. But with my nerves, I forgot to uplift you, and I wanted to acknowledge you publicly. It was not an easy fight. You stood alongside us to make it happen, so thank you. So the Committee on Education had a hearing yesterday, December 13th, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. on docket 1240, in order for a hearing on the Green New Deal for Boston Public Schools plans, specifically the plan to merge six schools into three and split each of them onto two campuses. This matter was sponsored by myself and Councilora Lara. Panel one consisted of parents, grandparents, of BPS students, and advocates. As always, you know, I like to lead with the people first, so I was really excited to have Megan Wolf, who's a member of QUEST, which stands for Quality Education for Every Student, Ruby Reyes, who's the Director of BEJA, Edith Bazil was unable to participate, but was definitely, her voice was heard, Allison Friedman, who's a member of the School Parent Council at the Sumner Elementary, Brenda Ramsey, a parent leader at the Shaw Elementary School, and John Mudd, a board member of the Boston Network for Black Student Achievement. We discussed, who discussed and shared a commitment to equity and belief that all students should have access to high-quality facilities. We also discussed the Green New Deal Coalition, which was made up of parents, educators, and community groups working together since 2018 regarding facility decisions in BPS. Testimony was taken from administration panel, including Rebecca Granger, who is the new Senior Advisor for Youth and Schools within the new Boston Children's Cabinet for the mayor's office, and from BPS, we had Charles Grandson, who's the Chief of Equity and Strategy Officer, Sam Tapina, the Deputy of Superintendent of Operations, Miriam Ortiz, the Director of Community Engagement, Ethan Burns, Assistant Superintendent of Inclusion and Education. It is clear from yesterday's hearing that parents want authentic public analysis of the Green New Deal's impact overall and broken down. They want authentic community engagement about the decisions, and they also uplifted the need to slow down the process and potentially even put a auditorium on school closures and major facility decisions until there is a major facilities plan. What I will say is, one of the reasons why we called this hearing to order was because Barbara Fields, if those who don't know her, is a fierce advocate in the education space, reached out to our office and said, "We need to get a better handle of how BPS is moving as it relates to the Green New Deal." And while I do appreciate the administration's attempt in the Boston Public School attempt to do real, meaningful community engagement, having participated in a number of different forums, we still have a lot of work to do when we're talking about creating space for people to be heard. And so some of the recommendations that I have made is to get out of the Zoom room and to get out into spaces where we're asking people to show up and to actually go into the streets. We have people who are sitting in hair salons getting their hair done, and barber shops, and nail salons, and laundry mats. There are spaces and places that are impacted by the decisions that we're making, but they're not being called into the space. So I'm asking BPS to get out of their comfort zone and into the streets, so that we can make sure that all parents are participating in these processes and have a real way of engaging. I do look forward to keeping this in committee and creating a space for the council to really lean into it. I also want to thank my colleagues who participated in the hearing, Councilor Luizhen, Councilor Rurrell, Councilor Braden, and Councilor Hansi Bach, and Councilor Flynn. I also want to note that my colleague and co-sponsor, Councilara, was unable to join me, but was definitely there in spirit, fighting a cold. But I know that she is holding it down and really leaning into this work. And I just want to quickly just apologize, because yesterday was my daughter's mock trial at Mocley Court, and I needed to be out of here exactly at 5:00. So I was keeping everybody on task, and do appreciate your grace for allowing me to zip through the process. But I'm just really grateful that we had an opportunity to hold space and create an opportunity for BPS to see us as partners, not just as people who want to just cause ruckus. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Docket 1240 will remain in committee. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1529, please?
Docket number 1529, Council Coletta and Lara offer the following ordinance amending Chapter 6, Section 6-11 of the City of Boston Code, ordinances regarding gender inclusion.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add, Council Luizhen is a third co-sponsor.
Hearing, no objection. Council Luizhen is added.
Thank you so much. And I love the fact that this is a restorative day for many Boston residents. We're doing decades and even hundreds of years of harm. And this amendment to the gender-inclusive ordinance seeks to undo the harm created in this building. And it was first championed by then-councilor, now-mayor Michelle Wu, and Councilor Braden. So I wanted to thank Councilor Braden for her leadership on this issue. My amendment to this ordinance is simple, but its codification will ensure we are truly fostering a welcoming and inclusive workplace for everybody in the City of Boston. In 2020, this body required that all city employees, or city employment forms, gave the opportunity for our trans siblings to self-identify, which was a huge jump in progress. Given this momentous change, as it currently stands, there is no opportunity for folks to choose preference over their chosen name in addition to providing their legal name, or as it's called in the trans community, their dead name. This results in an undignified process where a new city employee has to change their email address and go through a whole rigmarole to ensure that their chosen name is utilized and is in the directory of the City of Boston. It's a constant reminder that we, as a city, are not prioritizing their needs as we should be. And I was pleased in my conversations, after I had brought this to the floor about two weeks ago, in my conversations with the Chief of Equity, Chief People Officer, I think I got her title right, apologies if I did not, Chief of Information, and the Director of the LGBTQ Advancement Office, that they have identified this as an issue and have been working diligently behind the scenes to correct it. And I do appreciate their intentionality to get it right, to meet the needs of our trans colleagues, and to ensure our technology systems are equipped to take this on. This amendment simply codifies our obligation to truly be inclusive across all city departments, including in the council, and as Council Laura brought up to me in BPS and other city departments. But again, this is requiring us to be better in our code. And that means so much more to folks than you all will ever, ever know. And so I want to thank my North End liaison, Jack, who allowed me to tell his story, whom this amendment is named after, my Chief of Staff, Elise Sanchez, for her work, and others who offered support immediately after I raised this as an issue about two weeks ago. And with that, I'm going to respectfully request that my colleagues vote in the affirmative to suspend and pass this ordinance through the body today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council Laura. Council Laura, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Thank you, Councilor Coletta, for moving this forward. A couple of weeks ago, when Councilor Coletta spoke on the floor about the issues that her staffer was having in using their chosen name on the city council, I called Councilor Coletta immediately after the meeting, because I was actively working on a constituent issue. One of my constituents was an incoming BPS teacher and was being forced to use their dead name on the publicly visible grading program that Boston Public Schools uses. Now, we were able to correct this issue through a lot of back-and-forth conversation, but what we found is that there was a necessity for real systemic change, but also for the City of Boston to be more prescriptive in the implementation of this policy. And so the change to this ordinance was born. I have little to add to Councilor Coletta's remarks. As Councilor Mejia remarked, I am very much fighting a very strong flu, so I appreciate you all for being so gracious with me as I stumbled through this meeting. But I think that this is just getting us one step closer to ensuring that all of our people in the City of Boston, but also all of our workers here, feel like we are affirming their identities, whatever those identities may be. So I echo Councilor Coletta's request for all of my council colleagues to please vote in the affirmative and help us pass this amendment to this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Laura. The Chair recognizes Council Luizhen. Council Luizhen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank the lead sponsor and also co-sponsor, Council Coletta and Councilara for including me on this. Language, as we know, is important and can be a powerful driver of representation in what inclusion looks like in our city, or it can be a powerful driver of harmful stereotypes and exclusion, depending on how we use it. And so we should always be thinking as a city of how do we invite more people in? Both if that's on our legal forms and documents, if that's, you know, providing shelter. We should always be thinking about what we're doing to make Boston feel as welcoming as it should be to everyone. The LGBTQ+ community continues to face marginalization and discrimination, and violence, especially towards trans and gender nonconforming folks. We've seen that with Club Q in Colorado Springs. We saw the threats to Children's Hospital here, vandalism at the Pride and High Park. And so we have to speak with a clear and singular voice about what we will and won't tolerate, and about the lengths we will go to make everyone feel that this is a city that loves them and cares about them, and that happens. We can do that here on the city council. Research shows that gender-inclusive pronouns in language reduces bias and promotes healthy and positive societal views. We, as a city, have an obligation to ensure that language used on city forums doesn't discriminate by sex, social gender, or gender identity. We cannot perpetuate gender stereotypes, but rather, we need to reflect the beautiful diversity of all the residents and families and all the people that we are so lucky to work with here on the city council. So this is a small but important update to our code that will help enshrine and codify those protections. So again, I thank the sponsor, and I think, you know, everyone here on the city council, who hopefully will be voting with us to suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Luizhen. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Thank you to the original sponsors on this, Council Clara, Lara, and Luizhen. I, of course, support the offer put forth by the councilors, and anything that we can do to create a more gender-inclusive environment is something that I will heartily support. do to create a more gender-inclusive environment is something that I will heartily support. I think that we're just outdated, and life is a journey, and to move forward and to grow and to evolve, we must be more inclusive. I speak about my only parent, who was my 15-year-old uncle at the time. My mom left West Africa at the age of three. And my Uncle Luis, who I named my son after, was a closeted gay man and had to go through a whole lot of oppression and abuse and bullying, and then later moved to the Netherlands and then had to go through that all over again systemically. So eventually, when he came out, I remember him having to explain that traveling country to country or just to be able to navigate systems in terms of people not being inclusive. I would cry with him on the phone for hours, understanding that this was something that I couldn't do anything about at the time. My uncle later got killed by a drunk driver, and to this day, when I stand up and celebrate, I will do that courageously to fight for the LGBTQ AI+ community without any apologies, without any stereotypes or ignorances about what my religion or what my beliefs believe or stands for, that we should be tolerant and all-inclusive and not primitive and not abusive towards others. Basically, who gives a crap? Like, just, that wasn't a cuss, for the record. My book is not. Basically, mind your dang business and let people live. So I support you, and I thank you for putting this forth.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilor Coletta for bringing this ordinance amendment forward. As an original cosponsor with Mayor Wu, Councilor Wu, as it was at the time, I'm very happy to support this amendment. It's really, really critically important, and it was an oversight in that previous ordinance that this issue was not addressed and adequately corrected at the time. So I'm very happy to support this amendment to ensure that gender identity is recognized and that we see our folks in the trans community and gender, that this issue of gender identity is critically important, and it's really want to support you in this and vote in the affirmative today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo my colleagues in thanking the sponsors and Council Braden for her prior work, and just to say how important I think this is also as an example that the city can set to other employers and folks, you know, in Boston and beyond. I think it's one of those things that, like, this kind of systems problem can be referred to as sort of like thoughtless and an oversight, but it has very, like, cruel impacts on people. And it's the kind of sort of undercutting of folks' identity that we should be avoiding, stamping out wherever we can. So I hope, I'm really glad we're going to do it today. I'm definitely planning to vote in the affirmative, but I also hope that it will be taken as a model by other folks in the city and beyond. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Bock. The Chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to begin by echoing everyone's thanks to the sponsors for this, but also and most especially to Jack for making sure that this was something that I think many folks, when they were presented with it, said this has to change, like, immediately, but wouldn't have been presented if not for his courage. And so thank you for that, because I think that's incredibly important, and I hope that when this change goes through, generations of folks who work here in the council feel more inclusive and more part of this experience and have less residual harms of things that, hopefully, we keep continuing to move forward in knocking down things that either intentionally or unintentionally cause harm. And so I'm grateful to the sponsor and to the inspiration for this change. I also want to make clear that as the Chair of Government Office, I support the suspension and passage of this today. I think normally this would come to my committee, and then we would have a working session, a hearing, but I think where this has already been, sort of precedent has already been set through the legislation that was pushed forward by Council Braden and others in the past, I think this is something that should have likely been included in that original piece, and I think it's appropriate to move forward with all due speed today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Royal. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the lead sponsors. I just want to rise to also chime in and support wholeheartedly. You know, my little girl, a few years ago, was trying to figure out if they, she, how to identify, and she taught me so much about how we show up in this world and how people don't see people in their full selves, and was such a little strong advocate, then, not just for herself but for her peers, right? And as parents, you know, our kids are always looking to us to see how we show up in this world and how we validate or don't. And I think these little small gestures mean so much to people who have gone for so long unseen and unheard. And so I just want to say thank you, because these moments require political courage, and oftentimes people fall short of doing that. And so thank you for your leadership, and I just wanted to rise and say I'm here for all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Councilor Coletta, Councilor Lara, Council Louie Jean, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1529. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could I revisit that, ask if anyone wants to be an original cosponsor? I'm going to go back. If anyone would like to be a cosponsor, please raise your hand. I apologize to my colleagues. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bock, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Wrell, please add the chair. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 1530, please?
Docket number 1530, Council Lara offer the following: Petition for a special law relative to enact directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum requirement for admission into the Police Academy for Luigi De Deco.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would like to suspend and pass this home rule petition. This home rule petition is similar to the others that we've passed here on the city councillor, and it would help my constituent Luigi De Diaco, for your pronunciation. It would help him the ability to gain admission to the Boston Police Academy. Luigi is 44 years old, and is just a few years older than the current allowed age to join the academy. Years ago, Luigi was enrolled in the academy but suffered an injury that took a few years to recover from, thus missing the age eligibility. He is a lifelong resident of the city and currently is my constituent in West Roxbury. He's worked in his family construction business and has currently and for the past decade been a public safety officer at the Boston Public Health Commission, and so he currently is a City of Boston employee. He is dedicated to duty, something that he picked up as a naval cadet in high school, and it's one of the primary drivers for him wanting to join the Police Academy. I want to ask that my colleagues that we suspend and pass this home rule petition today so we can give him the opportunity to pursue his dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. Is anyone else hoping to speak on this matter or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, can you please add Council Royal, Council Bock, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Wrell, please add the chair? Council Lara seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1530. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1531, please?
Docket number 1531, Council Flynn offer the following: Resolution recognizing the 35th anniversary of the creation of the Office of Immigrant Advancement.
The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Braden. Council Braden, may I add Council Louie Jean as the second original cosponsor?
Seeing and hearing no objection, Council Louie Jean is added as a cosponsor. Council Flynn, please continue.
Thank you, Council Braden. Council Braden, this is a resolution to celebrate and recognize the Office of Immigrant Advancement. Thirty-five years ago this month, under the leadership of Mayor Raymond Flynn, the City of Boston's established its first immigrant rights unit to assist Boston immigrants. The office was launched in 1987, provided health care, job training programs, educational resources, and legal services at no cost, aiming to help those who need support to navigate their lives, their new lives, and those who lived in fear due to their immigration status. This office has come a long way since 1987. Today, the Immigrant Rights Unit has expanded, and it is now known as the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement. The office continues that same important work of assisting and strengthening the ability of immigrants and their family to fully inequitably participate in aspects of Boston's life. This is an exceptional office that does exceptional work, and I know my colleagues over the years have always advocated for this department during budget season to make sure that this office has the funds they need to do their job. So on behalf of my colleagues, I want to recognize the crucial work that these city employees, these dedicated city employees, play, and to celebrate those who have been part of the creation and the continued success of this office. I hope we can adopt this resolution today, and I know there's a small celebration on Friday evening on the third floor of people who are interested. I believe it's at 5 o'clock or 5:30. Thank you, madam. Thank you, Council Braden.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Braden, and thank you, President, for adding me to celebrate the 35th anniversary of the Office of Immigrant Advancement. It's a testament to the city, to former Mayor Flynn, and the immigrants who really helped found and advocate for the Immigrant Rights Unit, or what we now know as MOYA. We know that immigrants then, just as now, are helping to build our city. We wouldn't have Boston without the rich diversity that our immigrant communities contribute to that. MOYA has helped to boost the economic capacity and the cultural vibrancy that makes Boston so strong, and really, we depend on MOYA for the relations that they have with community-based organizations and grassroots organizations to really bring our immigrant communities that often live in fear because of the stronghold that xenophobia has on our society. We really depend on MOYA to help bring our immigrant communities into the city and let them know that we welcome them. Today, MOYA works tirelessly to help give opportunities for immigrants to learn English, grow their business, fight for status, and meaningfully participate in their community. We've seen MOYA participate in support of this week when the hearing sponsored by Council Lada for restoring the rights of immigrants with legal status to vote. And we saw it last week when they were, on the hearing, helping to support migrant communities. We know that MOYA is really centered in the work, and I just want to congratulate them in really doing so in light of, again, the rampant xenophobia that we often see, which is, you know, during this season is especially difficult for me to digest when we think about the holiday season and we think about for those who celebrate, you know, Christmas, thinking about Jesus' own plight as a refugee seeking shelter and refuge in Egypt with his parents. And so I just, I'm looking forward to further support, to further support the work of MOYA during the budget season because they try to do so much for so many of our neighbors, and I'm proud of the work that they've done. I will be there with you, Mr. President, you know, on Friday evening when we celebrate Immigrant Leads Boston so that we can make sure that we are building more immigrant leaders in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Oh, Council Fernandez Anderson. I'm going to get you switched on here. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, madam. Thank you to Council President Flynn and Council Louie Jean for filing this. As you may know, I, or you, of course you know, I am an immigrant and lived in the U.S. for 17 years without a green card. I arrived at the age of 10 and quickly learned how to obtain whatever I obtained to get a job, and did that at the age of 13. And so I often try to, now I'm trying to limit how much I speak or what I get up to speak so we can save time. But then I realized, I started getting some calls on this issue and emails and messages, hey, aren't you, weren't you formally undocumented? Why weren't you at the hearing? Why aren't you saying anything? And I know that some of my council colleagues share the same experience, but I also get some mail, go back to your country, you guys heard the message I played here in the chamber, a lot of xenophobia, but also, I'm not only the president, but I am a client, no, I'm kidding, but I also am Muslim, so I have subcategories to subcategories to my identity, and I underestimate sometimes how much it means for people like myself who are sitting at home watching. So I stand up to say, the first time that I got up here to speak Keverton Creole, I didn't realize the impact that I would have until the staff from City Hall said to me, that is the first time I heard it, you brought me in tears. So I'm getting up to say, it is highly traumatic to live in a country that you don't know, you don't know anyone, and you're trying to adapt. You come from Africa, from severe poverty, and you get to this country, and you're a kid, but you become sort of the caretaker of your family because your parents, or your mom is a young teen mom who went through a lot. And then you're afraid every single time. I got pulled over, I remember, and had to walk home with my then-one-year-old in the middle of the snow because I didn't, because my license would check out, because my car got suspended and might got taken away. I remember so many stories like this that I can share that I know that people at home share, and then a lot of people with their xenophobic views would say, well, what the heck you doing in this country? Like, go back, or we shouldn't be paying for those services. I didn't qualify for food stamps, for welfare, for housing, for any aid, for any services. I didn't ask for a handout. I didn't go to anybody to beg for anything. Not that I'm above that, that if I needed to, that God willing, I would have to do what I have to do. But I lived in this country for all those years as a kid, all the way growing up with no choice to be here, and did that, and suffered, and yeah, you're really fearful. You're driving in the middle of the cold in this hoodie to go to work so you can earn money to pay for, to take care of your kid, but then you're getting pulled over and you're afraid of immigration every hour of the day. I just, I'm going to shorten that and just say that I'm very thankful for the Office of Immigrant Advancement, but also looking forward to hopefully other resolutions, and I just want to appreciate you, Council Louie Jean, because I know that you've highly focused on immigrant issues here in your first term, and I really appreciate that and looking forward to doing more work. But I share my personal experience to say, hopefully for the people that are watching at home, I'm here, I experienced it, I remember you, I represent you, and I'll continue to fight for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just rise to thank the sponsors, and I too always wonder how much oxygen I'm occupying in this space, but so I'm being mindful of that. But I would be remiss if I didn't stand up, you know, I talk about the fact that my mom was undocumented for a period of time, and I came to this country in the late 70s when I was told to go back to where I came from. And to grow up in a city like Boston, right, and then become the first person in my family to graduate high school, and have my name on the ballot that my mom became a U.S. citizen, and to be able to vote for me and what that meant for her after cleaning offices and being disrespected and disregarded and being afraid. I know what this means to be seen and to be supported in this country. And so with that, I just really am grateful for the work that the Office of Immigrant Advancement does day in and day out for our community. And I remember my first term, January the 15th, after filing a hearing order on safe sanctuary spaces, the hate that I received because I was standing up to support other people. And it brought me back to 20-something years ago when I was told to go back to where I came from. And it goes to show how much work we still need to do here in the City of Boston so that everyone, no matter what their status is, how they show up in this world, that everyone could be fully embraced. And I think that we still have a long way to go to do that work. So we're here, and we ain't going nowhere. And with that, that's why we need to continue to support immigrant advancement so that nobody gets left behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. I will also take the opportunity to say I am an immigrant from Northern Ireland. I have a very different experience from my colleague, Council Anderson, Fernandez Anderson. I came here, I was hired to come over and work at Boston University Hospital, then became Boston Medical Center. But in my journey, I've come across so many immigrants in my work as a physical therapist in the City of Boston, and I have an incredible respect and appreciation for the work of the Office of Immigrant Advancement in the city. It is a very, very special place in our city government, and it recognizes the immense contribution and potential of all of our many immigrant communities here in the city. This Boston is an immigrant city. We are a city of immigrants, and I really want to thank and appreciate the work of the Office of Immigrant Advancement, and also to recognize the work of so many of our nonprofit partners that work with the Office of Immigrant Advancement, the English for New Bostonians, the Irish International Immigration Center, the Immigration Center, the Brazilian Women's Center, the Brazilian Workers' Center, all of these groups that work daily to help welcome and get immigrants settled and support our immigrants in our city. So it's an important moment to recognize that valuable work and commit ourselves to continuing to support our work with immigrants. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? And is anyone else like to add their name? Council Arroyo, Council Bock, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell, and please add my name. Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 31, 531. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1532, please.
Docket number 1532. Council Flynn offered the following resolution supporting renaming the McKinley Schools to the Melvin H. King South End Academy.
The chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Brenin. Council Brenin, may I ask permission for Council Fernandez Anderson to be an original co-sponsor?
Seeing no objection, Council Fernandez Anderson will be added.
Thank you, Council Brenin. As you mentioned, this is a resolution to support the proposal to rename the McKinley School, which is, which is in my district, from McKinley School to the Melvin H. King South End Academy. There's a group of residents, there's a group of BPS students that are involved in supporting this as well. Mel King of the South End is a historic figure in our city, who greatly contributed to our city and to our country, to the South End, to Roxbury. And renaming the school in his honor would be an appropriate recognition for his tremendous work and leadership he's played in our city. He's a one-time finalist for Mayor of Boston in 1983, but Mel King helped unite a city during very difficult times. He was a state legislator for the 9th Suffolk District. He was instrumental in the creation of Tent City, which is also in my, proud that it's in my district as well. It's a housing development that provides affordable housing to hundreds of residents. He is a lifelong resident of the South End neighborhood, and I know it's just right at the border of my district and Council Fernandez Anderson's district as well. As I mentioned, he's a lifelong resident of the neighborhood. He founded the South End Technology Center, where young people can find resources on technology, workforce development, community building. He's an educator, he's an athlete, he's a coach. He taught at the MIT School of Urban Planning, Massachusetts Institute of Technology. I'm proud to call Mel King a friend. Oftentimes, I would go to his house early on a Sunday morning. He would have, he would have kind of open, open house, and anyone that could, would want to stop by was able to. They'd have breakfast for people, and you'd sit around and listen to, listen to Mel, but also kind of exchange ideas with him. And he invited everybody in. It was a great learning opportunity for me, but I know other people in government as well. He has a wonderful wife as well, and a family, wonderful family. I hope we can adopt this resolution because Mel King is wholly deserving of having this recognition named after him. And I also thank tonight, the Boston School Committee is taking this up, maybe for a vote, or maybe it's a week later, that I had the opportunity to testify last week before the school committee in favor of this proposal. And I'll probably have the opportunity to at least send a document to the school committee letting them know that my colleagues are also on board. But I just want to thank Representative Mel King for helping bring Boston together, especially during very difficult racial times in the late 70s and into the 80s. And I'm proud of him, proud that he's a constituent, proud that he's a friend, and glad to partner with my colleague, Council Fernandez Anderson, on this recognition. Thank you, Council Brenin.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Council President Flynn, for adding me as a co-sponsor. Mel King is a true treasure to Boston. He's now 84 years old, having been born in 1928. To put that in perspective, 1928 is the year before the Great Depression, 13 years before U.S. involvement with World War II, and about 19 years before Jackie Robinson integrated Major League Baseball. So along with all the accolades that President Flynn has already mentioned, teaching at MIT or Urban Studies at MIT, founder of South End Technology, as well as being the author of the book, South End Press, 1981, Chains of Change. Shortly after this, in 1983, King ran for mayor as a contestant to then-mayor Flynn, and Ray Flynn, Council President's father. Though King would lose, the two of them, Ray, Mayor Ray Flynn and Mel King, then partnered and did a civil campaign, which was a breath of fresh air amidst all of the racial hostilities that had arisen in the city after the busing crisis. So we don't really have time to go on, and as we know, he was a state rep as well, winning his election in 1973, all the way to and serving to 1982, before running for mayor, as I described. Time does not allow me to recognize all of his accolades. I deeply love and respect Mr. King, and reiterate the support in renaming the McKinley School to Mel King, or apologies, as the Melvin H. King South End Academy. Thank you again.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to add my support. The McKinley School is actually spread across three campuses, and the one that people mainly know is the one in the South End. Its students are also at two campuses in my district, on Peterborough Street and on St. Mary's Street in Fenway. So really, I just wanted to state my strong support for this. Mel King, as has been said, really is a living legend of our city. He's been so inspiring to so many. I grew up hearing about him because my grandfather did the legal work in partnership with him on Tent City, and just, you know, so he's been somebody who's been inspiring now to three generations of my family. So would love to see this school called the Melvin H. King South End Academy. And, you know, we all had a great dedication of the square right near Yarlemouth Street for Mr. King a lot in this past year, and I think that's great, but I think he is a man who deserves many honors. And I also think that our school buildings are names that we use frequently and that get passed down through the generations in our city, and so this would be a very fitting honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. You know, Mel King is sort of a giant to me, someone who, when I was growing up in the city of Boston, was in rarefied air in the ways in which he moved and maneuvered. And as Council Bock says, I think that there's really a number of different ways he should be on. And I know he is on the wall of Madison Park, as he should be. He is, got a mural in the South End that "Love is the question and love is the answer", which is fitting for him. He has a number of things, and I stand in full support of him having this school named after him as well. I'm going to share a couple things before I give thanks to him again. One of them is my personal Mel King memory that has always stuck with me was the breakfast that Council President Flynn raised, is an ongoing tradition for him. And I remember being present at that when I was about 13 years old, and while the adults were having this sort of meeting of the minds around the table, I was going through his books, and he had a book there on Biko, Steve Biko from South Africa, one of the famous freedom fighters there against apartheid. And I remember reading it, or starting to read it while they were having this meeting and asking him if I could borrow this book. And I remember him saying to me, very sternly, actually, he's a big man, tall man, and so he kneels down, sort of lower to my face, and he says, you know, I don't usually lend my books because they don't come back. And I said, oh, well, I understand. And he said, but because it's this book, and because it's you, I'm going to lend you this book. And so I took that book with me, and then I was 13, so I didn't have a way to get back to his home independently. And so I had this book for years. I had it for over a decade, and I wouldn't, I would carry it with me everywhere I went in my stack of books because I remembered him telling me that they wouldn't come back. And I'm happy to report that I gave that book back 13 years later. And so at least one of his books made it back home. But he is a giant, he's a giant in ideas and compassion and leadership, and I would be amiss if I didn't mention the ways in which he has his own coaching tree, his own sort of roots that he has put forth in the city that have led to leadership from folks like former mayor and former councillor Kim Janey, Carolyn Crockett, Nikel Legardo, and I'm just naming a few folks who have learned and absorbed his way of being and his way of leadership, and I think they should be brought into this space because his impact has transcended even his own work, but into the work of others and how folks move through these spaces, including myself. And so I'm grateful to him. I'm grateful to this action. I'm glad that we are doing this while he can be here for it. I think often we name things after people pass on, and I've always hated that tradition because folks should get those flowers and that appreciation and that recognition now while they are here to appreciate it. And so I'm grateful that this process has not waited for him to no longer be with us but has actually moved forward while he is still here to see it. And so I'm very grateful for that. And I'm grateful to his family as well, who have given so much to the city, including Mel and his time to us as a community. And I know the impact that that can have on folks, and I know that they have done very well to understand that he's not just their father and a treasure to them, but a treasure to the community, and have done as much as they can to share him with us. And I thank them greatly for their sacrifice, and I'm glad that this building and these murals and whatever other ways we come up to honor him will last throughout time for those family members and their descendants. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Anyone else like to add their name? Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Bock, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jean, Council Louie Jean, I'll come back, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell, and Council Brenin, please. Council Louie Jean, I'm sorry, I missed your signal.
Be quick. I rise, as Council Arroyo said, to just make sure that we're giving Mel his flowers now. It is incredibly important to recognize him for all the work that he has done and all the flowers we can give him he deserves. I grew up as a My Town kid under Carolyn, which would not have been born without Mel King's really focus on how do we teach community history, how do we teach the history of people fighting for change? And so I am grateful for the impact that Mel has had on my life through My Town and through all the ways that he has really helped to shape this city, not just as an elected, but also starting off as an activist, fighting for affordable housing and fighting for equitable schools before, you know, before many folks were even talking about it. I've had the opportunity to go to the branches and invite my family. We've gone collectively, and I'm just grateful for him and his family. So absolutely yes to naming the schools after him and anything else that can bear his name. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adaptation of, adoption of docket 1532. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. Thank you.
We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1533, please?
Docket number 1533, Council Flynn for Council Mahia.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1533. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1534, please?
Docket number 1534, Council Flynn for Council Arroyo.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1534. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1535, please?
Docket number 1535, Council Flynn for Council Arroyo.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 1535. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're on to late files. I am informed, I am informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. The late file matters include two personnel orders and two appropriation orders from the mayor. The late file matters should be on everyone's desk. I'm going to take a minute, take a few seconds to make sure that they're there. We will take a vote to add these four late file matters into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the four late file matters into the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you read the first late file matter into the record, which is a personnel order?
Personnel order of Council Flynn on behalf of Council Fernandez Anderson.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you read the second late file matter into the record, which is also a personnel order?
Personnel order by Council Flynn for Central Staff Office Manager.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of this second late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This late file matter has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the third and fourth late file matters into the record, which are appropriation orders?
Dear Councilors, I transmit herewith for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $681,287 to provide funding for the Boston Public Libraries for the fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Public Library Professional Staff Association. I respectfully request your favorable action on this important matter. Dear Councilors, I transmit herewith a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Library for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $681,287 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Public Library Professional Staff Association. The terms of the contracts are October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of the contract term. As originally presented to you, the fiscal year 23 budget request included a reserve for collective bargaining, a separate appropriation to fund projected collective bargaining increases. A separate order has been filed to reduce the appropriation to support this supplemental request. I request, I respectfully request your support of this supplemental appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Bock, the chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to be seeking suspension and passage of these two dockets today. They obviously are just getting in now, so we did not have a chance to have a hearing on them, but because they continue the long-established pattern that we've been passing, and because, again, the folks have been waiting a long time on retro pay, would have to wait a whole other month, I would love for us to move them today. It's 166 professional staff across our libraries all across the city. Again, the wage pattern is 2, 1.5, and 2. It's, again, there's the $1,000 lump sum for, in recognition of service during COVID-19. There's a couple other sort of minor things that Juneteenth, again, gets added to the contract. The bereavement leave is now going to be provided to all members of the bargaining unit and not just those with the six months of continuous active service. It clarifies that professional development funds can be used for approved professional conferences. Sick leave accrual distribution is reverting to being distributed each January 1st and July 1st. The hiring process is being updated so that internal and external candidates are evaluated together. candidates are evaluated together. There's one day of leave being provided for cancer screening and a disclarification around the language of yearly query checks for the members. Those are a few, like, specific bargaining items. But again, the main thing is the pattern. This is obviously the contract that's been negotiated at the table and would love to have a support for a suspension and passage of both dockets today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Bach. Councillor Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The third late file matter has passed. Councillor Bach seeks suspension of the rules in passage of the fourth late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The fourth late file matter has passed. We're on to green sheets. Any councillor wishing to remove something from the green sheets may do so at this time. The chair recognizes councillor Baker. Councillor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to pull docket 1411 on page 14 of the green sheets.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read, actually, Mr. Clerk, can you pull the committee to ensure 1411 is properly before the committee?
Let me find the first. Page 14. The Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation, councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Worrell.
Yes.
Councillor Brayden.
Yes.
Councillor Lara.
Yes.
And councillor Flaherty. Docket number 1411, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $360,000 in the form of a grant, three years of salary for the BTD staff position that is needed to implement transportation and infrastructure improvements associated with the BPDA plans awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the Boston Planning and Development Agency Memorandum of Agreement.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes councillor Baker. Councillor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On November 3rd, 2021, the Boston Planning and Development Agency and the Boston Transportation Department entered into a memorandum of agreement with that the BPDA would fund a staffing position with BTD to assist in the implementation of the transportation plans developed by the BPDA. These plans include, but are not limited to, the Alston Brighton Mobility Plan, Plan East Boston, Plan Mata Pan, Plan Nubian, the Plan Dorchester Avenue Transportation Plan, and Plan Governor Glover's Corner. The Boston Transportation Department has a job description ready to post and needs authorization from this body to proceed with the hiring for the, this important role. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, councillor Baker. Councillor, councillor Baker moves for passage of docket 1411. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1411 has passed. The chair recognizes councillor Worrell. Councillor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking to pull docket 0866 from page 18 of the green, green sheets.
Docket number 0866, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $75,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 local consumer program awarded by the Mass Attorney General, be administered by Consumer Affairs and Licensing. The grant will fund staff costs and operational expenses.
Mr. Clerk, can you also pull the committee to make sure this is properly before the
The Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur, councillor Worrell.
Yes.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councillor Lara.
Yes.
This docket is properly before the body. The chair recognizes councillor Worrell. Councillor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. And this is a $75,000 grant that's awarded by our Attorney General. And this grant will help us fund costs for operation, operational costs, which is for Consumers Affairs and an outreach coordinator who monitors businesses to deter unfair and deceptive business practices and to help ensure consumers are adequately protected and could get appropriate assistance. So I recommend that this ought to pass.
Thank you, councillor Worrell. Councillor Worrell moves for passage of docket 0866. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0866 has passed. The chair recognizes councillor Flaherty. Councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page 16 of 19, docket 0921.
Docket number 0921, message in order for your review, the surveillance use policies from each city department or agency subject to the ordinance on surveillance oversight and information sharing, Boston City Code Section 16-63, the ordinance.
Mr. Clerk, can you please pull the committee to, to ensure it's properly before the body?
The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Lara.
Yes.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Royal.
Yes.
And councillor Brayden.
Yes.
Docket 0921 is properly before the body. The chair recognizes councillor Flaherty. Councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0921 is an ordinance that seeks to provide transparency and oversight of the acquisition and use of surveillance data and technology by the City of Boston. All stakeholders were brought to the table, including the appropriate city agencies and community advocates, and all worked together on this ordinance. As you all know, and I trust you've read, it's 800 pages in length. Not everyone is, is completely happy. There was some given, there was some take, there was some compromise. But with my experience, that tends to, to mean that it's good legislation. That said, it's a case of first impression. It's a six-day order that this body had extended, so we've got time constraints before we take action. And it's also an opportunity, a stepping off point where we'll find opportunities to adjust and/or amend if necessary in the future. The ordinance further, furthers the protection of privacy, civil rights, interracial and immigrant justice, while allowing for the delivery of city services, particularly public safety. And at this time, this chair moving for passage of docket 0921. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Flaherty. Councillor Flaherty moves for passage of docket 0921. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair recognizes councillor Mejia.
Councillor Bach had her light first.
The chair recognizes councillor Mejia.
Oh, you want me to go before councillor Bach? Okay. Thank you. I didn't see that side. Sorry, councillor. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to, for the record, be really clear that my vote is not an endorsement of said report. During the redistricting process, we occupied a lot of time and energy, so I have not had a chance to dive into it. And I do believe we have an opportunity to really dive a little bit deeper in, in the new legislative cycle. So while I appreciate it being brought up for a vote today, want to just make note for the record that my vote is not a reflection of my endorsement or, or passage in support of it. So I just wanted to be really clear that we have a lot of work to do, particularly in the government transparency and accountability piece of the work. So looking forward to next year and advocating strongly that we have a series of public hearings so that we can do a deeper dive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mejia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair, on, on docket 0921, the chair recognizes councillor Fernandez Anderson. Councillor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Councillor Bach, do you want to go first? Thank you, councillor President. So I just, I do, I also want to go on record. I think it's extremely important that we outline the issues here. Technology such as ShotSpotter have been shown to be notoriously ineffective with inaccuracy rates of around 70%. Sounds like firecrackers and car backfiring are likely to set the technology off, creating a diversion of public safety officers where they are needed, aren't needed. This is costly and ineffective technology. I believe we can assume that the technology is not evenly distributed across our communities, hence likely acting as a dragnet by which predominantly black and brown and working class people are surveilled unnecessarily and forced into interactions with police that do not stem from criminal behavior, as demonstrated by the inaccuracy rates of the technology. Law enforcement has not reported much in the way of this technology, leaving us searching for additional information. As it stands, this is misuse of resources that could be going more and more worthwhile public safety measures. We are also still in the dark as to who can access ShotSpotter information and what specific locations technology is being used. They impact too many people in our communities for such a tight-lipped approach from BPD. We need more data, information and information regarding this matter before we can support its continued implementation and funding. However, I understand that sort of we tend, this tendency of doing things quickly because we don't have a board or the platform to be able to address this issue, where most likely, at least I can speak for myself, supporting it because it's the lesser harm to do, to move forward, but really would like to slow it down, honor the information we have, which shows inadequacy, inadequacy of the technology, and continue the conversations before moving forward. But today, it feels as though that we, or at least with conversations with community, that we will be in support in order for it to actually move forward because we have it as is. But would appreciate if we can take a look, seconding my council colleagues Mejia's point, to slow down the conversation and do this better. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fernandez Anderson. So my, my, my board is a little screwed up here. So is anyone still looking to speak on 0921? The chair recognizes councillor Bach. Councillor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I really want to thank councillor Flaherty for his stewardship of this and also for moving this today. I do think it's important, since we, the council, write legislation with various deadlines, and then, in this case, we extended it, that we sort of keep to the deadlines, since we also try to hold the administration accountable to deadlines in our legislation. But where I do want to echo colleagues is, I, I feel is like we just sort of ran out of legislative time to dig into some of the bigger issues here. And, and to councillor Flaherty's point about the 800 pages, I think, you know, it's also a weird sort of instance where because it's the first time the policy's gone in, we got, the council got all of the surveillance policies for all, all departments of the city filed at the same time, which made it really hard to work its way through. But to me, there are some particular technologies. Councillor Fernandez Anderson mentioned one. I, I certainly feel like drones raise a lot of questions about, you know, people in upper floor apartment buildings. You sort of assume your fourth, fifth floor window is private, and then you introduce a new technology and, and sort of like, how is that changing? What's private, what's public? So I think there's a number of technologies where we really should be holding hearings in the new year and digging in on them and thinking about, are there appropriate further regulations we should be using? But I think that pushing that into the new year allows us to focus on those instead of just the entire mass of things that were filed this year. And I do just want to note for folks that in 1663.5, so the ordinance as written, it says that, you know, we're going to be getting annual surveillance reports. And then it says, if the benefits do not, like, from the council's judgment, don't outweigh the costs of the technology, it says the city council may recommend modifications to the surveillance use policy. We may also withdraw authorization for continued use of surveillance technology by majority of the vote of the city council and/or request a report back from the mayor. The ordinance also specifies that nothing in this ordinance shall prohibit the city council from enacting a separate ordinance to ban or otherwise regulate any surveillance technology, whether previously approved or not. So those are sections D and E of 63.5 in 16. And that just, I wanted to put that on the record, just to say for anybody interested in these issues, that, you know, the council approving today does not constrain us from taking that deeper dive on some of these things next year. And that's something that I definitely want to be part of, but I will be voting in support today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Bach. The chair recognizes councillor Lara. Councillor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I, I'm a little frustrated with this process, and I have been a little frustrated with this process because I think what would have been appropriate to do at this time would have been to give ourselves an extension and to councillor Bach's point about wanting to stay true to our deadlines. I don't think that we stray true to deadlines at the effect of not doing our job. And I think that that's what's happening right now, is that the council is not doing this job. We are not, not only are we not meeting this moment, we're not in compliance with this ordinance. We have not had proper hearings. We haven't reviewed all of the documents, but we're going to pass this on today for all of the reasons that folks stated. The ordinance does state that nothing in the ordinance prohibits the city council from enacted, from enacting a separate ordinance or ban or to otherwise regulate any of the surveillance equipment. And so I just want to go on the record to say that we have every intention of continuing to have hearings on every single one of these. We have, this ordinance encompasses seven different departments, and we only had one hearing, that only the Boston Police Department showed up to. Community has not been involved. We haven't had enough public input. And although I appreciate us being gracious with ourselves because of the limitations that we had during the redistricting process, I don't want us to pat ourselves in the back because we have failed to really meet the moment and really, what is the point of passing an ordinance? And if we're ultimately not going to take the steps to make sure that we are holding all of the departments that are, that are implementing all of these surveillance practices in our neighborhoods and with our constituents accountable to the processes. So, again, I just want to state for the record that I have every intention of continuing to file hearing orders, to really scrutinize every single one of the departments and the processes that they are implementing. And it is my hope, and I will say this publicly, that the chair make every, every accommodation to not only schedule these hearings, but that the administration also works with us to make sure that this is happening. We're going to move this work forward. The vote today does not take it out of the council, and I have every intention of continuing to scrutinize every single one of the practices that have been presented to us in these 800 pages. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lara. The chair recognizes councillor Coletta. Councillor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I rise to simply add my stance on the record as well. We're moving forward on this due to a timing issue as we've exhausted our extension window. I'm also equally as, as frustrated, but I'm voting to move this forward with the proviso that we act on this quickly, hopefully within the first month or two months of 2023, and develop amendments with advocacy groups like the ACLU. So I'll echo my comments, or my colleagues' comment, that this path causes the least amount of harm. And I think it's our obligation to get this right. And I look forward to conversations in the first part of the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coletta. The chair recognizes councillor Royal. Councillor Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to echo the sentiments of my colleagues that we really did run up into a time issue here. I think the least harm is to do what we are doing today, which is the passage of it. But the ordinance itself, written into it, gives us the ability and, to me, the responsibility to call some of these things back and to look at them and to see whether or not they serve this city and to have the power, if we come to the determination that they do not serve this city or to the benefit of the city, to revoke these permissions as, on a case-by-case basis. And I think the appropriate thing here to do, we, as councillor Bach has raised, we received 800 pages of documents. This isn't simply restricted to the surveillance by the Boston Police Department. There are other departments that also have different forms of surveillance, different forms of tracking individuals. And I think it behooves us to pass this document as it is today with a understanding that in the next year, some of these departments and some of these forms of surveillance or tracking will come before this council in a hearing or multiple hearings so that we can dig into the benefits to those departments as they see it, and to hear from community themselves about their, their level of awareness and understanding and how they feel about those surveillance packages or surveillance equipment and how that's being used. Because I do think that the major issue that we come upon when we come to the use of surveillance technology is often, they're many years ahead of where we are legislatively, and they're capable of all kinds of different surveillance that we aren't necessarily aware of until they start to use it. As an example, our cameras had the ability, cameras throughout the city had the ability to, through an app update, start using facial recognition. And unless we are made aware of all of those things in terms of what the technology is advancing and how it is advancing, what things are available, even if they're not being used, like, for instance, they weren't using that face, facial recognition at that time, and they still aren't because we legislated it, but being made aware that they had the option to do that, I think pushed us to move that way. And so, moving forward, I think we should have more hearings on this in the coming year to dig into very specific forms of surveillance and very specific surveillance programs and very specific versions of different departments and what they're doing. I think one hearing frankly wasn't enough, but I understand the time constraints and the way in which the chamber works as the chair of government ops, trying to get things scheduled as well. We have a two-hearing-a-day rule, and with redistricting taking up much of that time and then trying to make sure everybody gets what they need to get done by the end of the legislative year, I understand the difficulty the chair had in scheduling. And so, moving forward into the next year, I would hope we have a commitment to more hearings on this, but I will be voting yes today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. I know Counselor Flaherty wants to respond, but let me give Counsel Louis Jean the opportunity to weigh in. Counsel Louis Jean?
Sorry, I thought my light was on. Thank you, President Flynn. I am deeply concerned about the erosion of just privacy generally in our society, and I think that this is an example of it. There are some serious civil rights concerns here with the use and the expansion of these technologies, civil rights and civil liberties concerns. And we saw even just from the table of content, table of contents, which I mentioned at the hearing, when we look at this list, it doesn't appear to be an exhaustive list of departments and, departments and technologies for which we should have surveillance use policies. So I'm really concerned about that. I'm concerned about the singularity of the hearing that we held and even in the, you know, the lack of responses that we got from Boston Police Department about what it looks like for us to get, to have community meetings, to get community buy-in and not just talking, doing this work and telling community what we're doing, but really working alongside community members for what these surveillance use policies should look like. So I just want to put that on the record that I think that we should all be concerned about government use of technologies that further erode our individual civil liberties and privacies and that it's important for us as a body to continue to hold hearings to force transparency out of the Boston Police Department and out of other city departments about how they're using technologies and whether we've okayed their use of these technologies, whether we've okayed the use of city funds to pay for these technologies. And so I'm committed to working alongside community members and stakeholders who are also interested in making sure that we are doing everything we can to protect the civil rights and civil liberties of our residents, especially for our Black and Brown communities, our immigrant communities. We know from research, from data, from court decisions, how these technologies tend to be disproportionately used against communities that already have their back against the wall. And so I'm looking forward to continued hearings on this, and will be, you know, like everyone else has said, I understand the constraints that we've had, but the work doesn't stop here. And so I look forward to what we'll do in the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louis Jean. Before I call on Counsel Flaherty, I'm going to weigh in on this. I wasn't, I wasn't planning on, on doing it, but I had, I coordinated a meeting yesterday with some immigrant-owned businesses, business leaders in my district, and there have been some robberies in these immigrant-owned businesses. And these business owners are asking me, as their district city councilor, for more support, for more services. They're asking me for, for cameras. They're asking me for a spot charter. It plays a critical role in our city. They're asking me for more police presence. So I just wanted to weigh in on that and let you know what some of my immigrant-owned businesses are reporting to me as their district, district city council. Let me also add the, certainly Counsel Flaherty may have been up against a deadline, but I know if there was more time, Counsel Flaherty would have had more meetings because there's not a more professional chair than Counsel Flaherty. So I don't, I'm a little, I just want to acknowledge the important role Counsel Flaherty has played, and I'll, I'll give Counsel Flaherty the final, the final comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to obviously to, to, to clear up, make sure there's no misinformation and to maybe address some of the aspersions coming my way as chair, there were several dates, both hearing and working session dates, that I had submitted to the parties. The advocates, frankly, specifically the ACLU, requested, asked for further dates and further delay. So let's just, I'm going to put it right on the table. People know me. They know how I run my committees. I don't toe-drag. I don't slow dance. I don't care what the issue is. Based on my experience and how I treat you all as colleagues, whoever is the sponsor or the author, including the administration, I am more than accommodating. I submit dates. I try to find a way to get the hearing, to get the information, and so that will continue to be my practice, despite some of the aspersions that I'm sort of hearing subtly here. For those that attended the hearing, we did have an administration panel that did include the Police Department. We also had an advocate panel that included several folks, particularly also the ACLU. We had public testimony. Folks that showed up were allowed to testify. We also, in addition, I had requested, we have Zoom testimony because we did hear from some advocates that weren't able to make it in here, and I wanted to make sure we made every accommodation for them. I know that some of my colleagues were not able to attend. I know that some did review and watch the video. I also know that the document is 800 pages. So through the chair, I'll challenge my colleagues, dive into it over the holidays, get through those 800 pages. Once again, as chair, I will be more than accommodating to each of my colleagues, to the administration, to advocates, to Joe Blow on the street. That's, that's the council that I am as a citywide city council. So I, I do take exception. I do appreciate that some folks did sort of say that, hey, I tried my best. I always try my best. I have been in this business for 20 years for toe-dragging and slow dancing and swerving. If that was me, if that's how I ran my committees, one, I probably wouldn't have the committee, and two, I wouldn't have been re-elected so many times over the years. So I appreciate the opportunity to make sure that there's no misinformation leaving this chamber today and that there's no aspersions, that this was a one-sided, lopsided hearing, and that advocates weren't given the opportunity and the public was not given the opportunity and that I didn't, I wasn't responsive to advocates and I wasn't accommodating their schedule, not my schedule. I made my Skype, I was bending over to try to make sure we had hearings. In fact, I didn't just send one date, one hearing date, because I knew how important it was. I knew how many different departments are involved. I knew how voluminous the documents were. I sent several dates. I said, we might need to have several hearings. I even, in addition to that, I sent working session dates. So just so that everyone's clear here, that's how I roll, that's how I ran this, this process. Yes, we're up against time constraints. This body got an extension, 100%, we were able to work within that. So we had two options today. Do nothing, which I would not have been advocating for and been proud of, and then it goes on to the task force, and then they'd get the decisions. If that's the case, people would say, hey, why do we even need a city council? Why don't we just elect task forces and let them do that? I didn't want that to happen. I didn't want our body to have to deal with that. And so I said, no, let's take this position today, knowing that it's a case of first impression, knowing that it's 800 pages, which I bet my house on it, two-thirds of this body haven't read, but I'm not going there. In addition to that, I know that we're going to have questions. I know that technology's going to advance. I know that this is a stepping off point, that each and every one of us have the ability to do a 17-F and/or call for a hearing in the New Year. Fully expect that to happen. Fully expect, as chair, to support those requests from my colleagues, like I always have over the last 20 years. Thank you, Mr. President. Merry Christmas to everybody. Happy Holidays. Feliz Navidad. Wish you and your families all the best in this new season. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Happy Kwanzaa. Put them all in there.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. We're going to, we're going to vote on it. So Counsel, Counsel Flaherty is moving for passage of docket 0921. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Got the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call vote on docket 0921. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye.
Counsel Brayden.
Aye.
Counsel Brayden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Aye.
Counsel Coletta, aye. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Present.
Counsel Louis Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louis Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Majority in the, do you want to, Mr. Clerk, do you want to give Counsel Fernandez-Anderson an opportunity? Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Yes. 12 in the affirmative, one present.
Thank you. The docket has passed. We're still on, we're still on green sheets. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the lunch, I mean, for calling onto me. I would like to pull docket 1344 on page two, or actually, or the last page of the green sheet, currently assigned for further action for the second reading. As a reminder, this docket is appropriate, is for an appropriation in the amount of $1,515 to cover the cost of feasibility study and schematic design work for boiler repair at the Jeremiah E. Burke High School window and door repair at the English High School, boiler repair at the Curly K-8 School, boiler repair at the Haley Elementary School, and roof repair at the Henderson Upper School. We took our first vote on this docket October 19th, and I'm asking you now for the second vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Mr. Clerk?
I'll have to read the.
That's right. So you'll read it into the record.
And then I'll poll the committee. Docket number 1344 from the Committee on Ways and Means, message in order authorizing the city of Boston for an appropriation in the amount of $1,515,000 for the purpose of paying costs of feasibility study and schematic design work associated with roof, boiler, and window and door replacement projects at the following schools: the Jeremiah E. Burke High School, English High School, the Dr. William Henderson Upper School, the Dennis C. Haley Elementary School, and the Curly K-8 School. The Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia. Counsel Louis Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Baker.
Yes.
And Counsel Brayden.
Yes.
Properly before the body.
It's properly before the body. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. If you want to give a brief, brief highlight, and then we'll, we'll take a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate, I'm asking for a second vote on the affirmative on docket 1344.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson moves to take the second reading vote on docket 1344. Mr. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote on docket 1344, please?
Docket number 1344, second reading. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counsel Brayden.
Aye.
Counsel Brayden, aye. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.[1433.91][1433.91]23. Yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louis Jean.[1444.91][1444.91]23. Yes. Counsel Louis Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Murphy.[1448.91][1448.91]23. Yes. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worrell.[1451.91][1451.91]23. Yes. Counsel Worrell, yes. 12 in the affirmative.
It has passed. We're still on green sheets, if anyone has anything else? We're onto the, we're onto the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are two additions to the consent agenda. The chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're on to memorials. Several of my colleagues asked to speak about someone from their family or their, their community that has passed, especially during, during this holiday season. So I thought it was appropriate if, if people want to speak about a loved one or a community member that has passed during this time. I'm going to, I'm going to read, read the names into, into the record, and then I'm going to ask if anyone would like to speak on, on, on their loved one or their, their family member or their community member. The, the chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wondered if I can just make a quick announcement before that, just in the spirit of, like, not memorials, but just wanted to thank everyone here for their prayers. My brother-in-law, those of you know that I made a boo-boo and hired my sister and did not hide it and told everybody that she's my sister. But anyway, during that time, my brother-in-law went into cardiac arrest, and I asked you for your prayers. Then quickly, a month, a couple of months later, he was on the list waiting for heart. They've now, he's gotten a heart transplant and is recovering nice and strong, and just wanted to celebrate that and thank you so much and continue to keep him in his prayers to recover. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. So I'm going to, I'm going to go through these memorials, then I'm going to ask if anyone would like to speak on their, on their loved one as well. For, for Counsel Arroyo, Lisa Nazaro. For Counsel Coletta, Mimi Ren, Brian Higginbottom. For counselors, Flaherty and Flynn, Robert McCarthy, Joseph Hamilton. At this time, I want to call on Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. For a law, I'm going to speak on, on my memorials, and I rise today in memoriam of these two individuals, both sudden losses for their families and respective communities. So Mary Ann Mimi Ren was a pillar in Charlestown. She dedicated her entire life in service of her community and gave over 30 years to the BCYF site in Charlestown. She mentored and guided thousands of children in her time and saw every family that walked through the door as an extension of her own. She was warm, welcoming, and just a bright light every single time I got a chance to speak to her. She was an integral part in so many people's lives and literally helped raise thousands of kids in 02129. There is a huge hole in our hearts now that she has transitioned, and my thoughts are with her entire family and the entire community of Charlestown during this difficult time. And the second individual who has left us far too soon, and I apologize. He was a friend of mine from high school and a resident of Hyde Park. His name is Brian Higginbottom, and we belovedly called him Higgy, because his last name is really long. But Higgy was a rising star in the comedy space in Boston, and everyone who knew him would describe him as incredibly kind, genuine, and empathetic adjectives that one usually wouldn't associate with a comedian. Higgy was just 30 years old. And I want to close this meeting to put a call to action in his memory, to provide better access to mental health resources and encourage everyone to reach out to their friends and family, to tell them that you love them and appreciate them, especially during this holiday season. So again, my heart is with his entire family and the entire Hyde Park community at this time, and thank you again for allowing me to speak on this. It means a lot to me, Council President Flynn. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. And also, I want to acknowledge, on behalf of Counsel Louis Jean, Che Kama, Waltawa, Would, would anyone else like to speak? The chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Sorry, Mr. President, this isn't in the spirit This isn't in the spirit of moratoriums, but I felt, of memorials, but I felt like I would be remiss not to say, because we've, many of us have had opportunities to celebrate a lot of Christmas tree lightings all over the city in the last few weeks, that in, on Sunday at 4:00 PM, both on the Boston Common and on Copley Square, there will be a menorah lighting for the first night of Hanukkah. And so I just wanted to say, because those are both, they're sort of my district and Counselor Flynn's district and Copley Square, but of course, like, the Jewish community is throughout all of Boston, and just wanted to make sure all colleagues were aware of that opportunity to gather with them as, as the Jewish festival of lights begins. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Bark. So a moment of silence for all those that were mentioned. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in those mentioned here. Before we adjourn today, we would also like to state that there is a lunch that you're cordially invited to right now in the Curly Room. And I also would like to thank the clerk's team, the wonderful clerk's team, city council central staff, my colleagues, and our staff as well. The chair moves to adjourn today, si ne di, si ne di a. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.